Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Sioux Nebraska governing body. The city of Sioux provides for the Nebraska Municipal Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Municipal Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign and sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address with a clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Sioux reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the bull.
Welcome back.
Here.
Camera, press.
Here.
Singleton.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hans.
Here.
All right. Item number one this evening, consideration of approval of draft minutes of August 2nd, 2016.
Move to approve.
Sorry. Motion a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Walking back, press, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
Item number two, considerations of consent agenda.
Move.
Second. We have a motion a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Walking back, press, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
Item number three, presentation by DA Davidson on past year refinancing and bond sale. Paul?
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. How was everyone tonight?
Great.
Good. Has everyone received a copy of this in advance? Okay, great. Thanks for having me out. Has everyone, or some of us may remember, I was out in January with five ordinances and council approved several refinancing issues for the highway allocation fund pledge bonds, general obligation bonds, water system bonds, the sewer bonds, and also the electric system bonds. And over the course of the last several months, we've worked with the city to market those bonds and we've had a series of successful sales. I will say Bonnie Bruce were extremely helpful and did an excellent job with this. And without their help, I don't know that we would have worked through all this very smoothly. So thank you for all your assistance. When we came to you for, and I'd like to just kind of go through here quickly, I'll try not to read all of this to you. Mostly I want to be available to answer questions, should there be any. When we looked at the highway allocation bonds, we were projecting a rate of 4.5 percent. The rates came in at 3.7. And as you can see, that's kind of the theme throughout all of our issuances. So Davidson's very pleased with not only the efforts of everyone involved, but also the market cooperated with us, which was as important as anything. So the savings are all greater than projected. The interest costs are all lower than we projected in January. And we feel really good about all these. It could have gone the other way and it wouldn't have been anyone's fault, but I just think everything kind of came together for us. So we're very pleased with the results and thank you for your business as always. If there are any questions, then we, I'd be happy to do my best to address them.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, sir.
Well, just the first one, Paul, the highway allocation, that's those new bonds that we did. And then the rest of them were refundings and the sewer bonds, we added a little bit of money into that one for the Plum Creek Siphon Project where we had to kind of reshore up the sewer line that runs from Concordia through Plum Creek. And then we also had the refunding electric system, and we also threw some money for that Robert Street build in there. So most of them were refis, but a couple new ones.
Small amount of new money per bus, but mostly refinancing. And we didn't extend the final maturity. We kept your payments as scheduled. And a secondary benefit too is we were able to condense several issues down per credit. Obviously, it would be great if we could do just one issue for all your debt, but because we've got the GOs and the different utility systems, we're required to sell those bonds separately.
Hey, Paul, just from more curiosity, what drives the rate on like the highway allocation, I mean, being almost four versus the rest of them you get, are there really good rates on?
Tax status. All the bonds were tax exempt except for the highway allocation pledge bonds. Great question. Thank you.
Did you say the net savings? Did you say that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. That number at the bottom's a good one. In total, the city saved $747,000 through all of these refinancings. That was my ta-da.
I know. I thought maybe I missed it.
The newspaper got it. Excellent. Any other question?
Please don't use the word ta-da.
That's the headline.
Yeah, that's not investment banking terms.
Back at Paul, they did a great job. They were really easy to work with. And we spent a lot of time on this. Bonnie especially had to give them a lot of information, things like that. So it was a good joint effort for big savings for us.
Thank you. I think it all came together. So again, thank you for your business. We appreciate the continued relationship as we have for many years.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
Item number four, presentation by Nebraska Municipal Power Pool on utility rate service study. Welcome.
It's not Andrew Ross.
Thanks very much.
Phil, welcome back.
Hello. I'm another, I often get called Paul, but really my name's Phil. Good to see you all again. Nice to be back on August, mid-August day that looks like June. Very green out there. You should have three pro forma, which is what we call our financial planning document. And I want to go through this quickly. We update these almost annually. The city's on a four-year service agreement to do electric, water, and sewer financial planning, cost of service, and rate design. So we've got an update here dated August 1, looking at electric. The row you want to look at, which is important tonight, is F. At the very top, those A through F are our assumptions, except for the rate adjustments as the projection or the proposal. We're not seeing a need for a rate increase in October of 16 or 17, but then have in October of 18 beginning then we are looking that probably will make a 2% rate increase to keep the electric utility solid. Give you some rows to look at. Runs 1 through 4 are the revenues. You can see your utilities running right at the 10 million mark and increases to 11, 2 by 2021. On the expense side, row 6 there, or line 6, is the big cost. That's the purchase power cost. In 2016, we're looking at almost $6 million of the 7.7 million, the balance of that being your distribution, operation, and maintenance and administrative cost. You have a $600,000 of depreciation that's kept on the books. It's a journal entry. It's not cash out of the bank. It's just, represents the fact that customers are wearing out the system. And then there's a contribution to the general fund, right around $480,000. It stays in that range. And then a little bit of money back for interest on cash reserves, which we'll see down at the bottom of the page. So the net operating income in line 15 shows that in 2016, you have about a $962,000 debt income. That generated an 11.9% return on investment. Our target's about 4%, as that's part of the reason your utility rates are high enough that you can skip a couple of years without having rate increases and still pay for all of your operating expenses and do some fairly significant construction, as we'll see down below. Another line that DA Davis just led, Paul talked about keeping, you know, refinancing, that all helps out a lot in all these utilities. But in your bond ordinance, there's a covenant in there that says you have to have a debt coverage ratio, which is line 18, of 1.25 times coverage or better. You can see an electric utility is running in the 6 to 2 and 1/2 to 3 range. So debt coverage is not a problem in the electric utility. Going on down, skip down through, you can see on line 27, you got about $18 million worth of plant assets after depreciation. That's $8 million, so it's about 44% depreciated. Typically, utilities are around 50%. So the, your distribution system is only half worn out. That's good. When those numbers get very high, you start having some concerns that things are going to start fading. In the cash inflows in line 32, you see depreciation comes back in because it's a journal entry. It's not cash out of the bank. It's just a representation that you're wearing your system out of about $600,000 a year. And the cash outflows, about $2 million of expenditures in 2016, principal on debt, $210,000. And I'm pretty sure this reflects the new numbers, especially out to the future from the refinancing. And so you had a net cash change of $387,000 coming into the electric utility to shore up that 6 and 1/2 million dollars to get almost to 7 million. The minimum cash reserve target by the formula below, which has six elements, is 3 million. And so your cash reserves are very strong, which again allows you to skip a couple of years and not have rate increases until 2018. We're projecting you're going to have about $4.4 million out in 2021 with a cash target of 3.9, or 3.8 million. The other pro formas are going to have very similar titles and financial targets. Are there any questions at this point about the page or about specific numbers in here?
We did make changes, Phil.
Yes.
In this year's budget, we're going to increase the franchise fee to 10%.
Okay.
And we also had a kind of an influx in cash paper-wise that would, but we can fix that next year. I mean, we've got plenty of cash. I still don't believe we need any kind of.
Yeah, that had another $400,000, it looks like, roughly speaking. If I take 10% of the retail, it's about $900,000. So we're at 450, so, or 485, so.
So a big influx of cash doesn't change anything?
Well, you know, you're talking about, that'll begin in fiscal year 17. What is it going to happen in 16?
It's going to happen in this budget of years, so.
So 1, 2, you're talking about $3 million of cash. My guess is that we may have to have an October of 17 rate increase because cash will fall below the minimum requirement unless that's not going to continue out to 2020.
So an influx of cash, meaning we're transferring $2 million into the cash, is going to cause a rate increase?
You're taking money from the electric utility.
No, putting in.
I don't know if these numbers, I don't know how to explain it. Our books were not incorrect. It was how the financials were prepared.
Well, I know that, but I'm looking here, and his starting cash position matches our ending cash position October 2015. His ending cash position for 2016 is not going to be correct because we're doing a transfer of $2 million.
Transfer into electric? Out of, out of water into electric.
And is that?
Dollars that were allocated to the wrong account.
Oh, so this is like a count correction?
Yes.
Okay, well then, you're going to have, instead of 7 million in 2016, you'll have 9.
Right.
And so that'll carry all the way across. You're going to end up having 6 million minus 3 for the increase in the franchise fee payment. You're going to, you end up with 6 million. You're 9 minus 3, 6. And with the target, it was 4. So no, there will not, I always misunderstand. I know there was an adjustment.
And we hadn't had a chance to talk about that. We just found that recently.
My guess is that with that, those two changes, the October 18 rate increase might be zero. That's what you wanted to hear, right?
It'll be on MPPD too, if they hold their rates at zero like they keep saying they're going to.
Right.
They'll just set a new contract. I expected them to go up right away, but they haven't.
Our assumption on MPPD, all transmission and power supply is 2%. Now, they're saying zero, but then out there in the 2018-19 range, they have a fairly good size rate increase, so we just levelize that out because we don't know exactly how it's going to end. So we do have a contingency for rate increases from your power supplier. If you look at line E up in the very top, you see the 2.2222. That's what our assumption is for power cost increases. And again, that's 6 million of your 7, almost 8 million dollars. So that's 75% of the cost of running the electric utility. Thank you for bringing that up. I'll, we'll work with Bonnie. And this was just to give you an update, but I don't think that's going to change things. It actually might improve electric. Okay, moving to sewer or wastewater, which is the more politically correct term, I guess. The format's the same. Your revenues are in rows 1 through 4. You can see it's about 1,600,000 in revenue utilities. It has operating costs, line 12, of about $996,000. Most, a third of that is labor. Another third is cost of production, which is basically operating the waste treatment plant. And that supplies chemicals and electricity. We got about $300,000 of depreciation, some interest income, nets in 2016, $335,000, which is 3 and 1/2% return on investment. Our target is 4. And so this utility is performing very well at the target return on investment. You've got a net plant of about $10 million, 9.5. The gross plant is 16 million, so this utility is almost 60% depreciated. It's a little bit more worn out. And that's pretty typical of water and sewer because they come in in lumps because of the big facility that, particularly in sewer that treats the effluent. They last for 30, 40 years, and then DQ comes in and says you got to do a whole, do a thing. And so you find that sewer is much more lumpy in terms of the capital expenditures. On cash flow, we got about $700,000 coming in in line 34 for 2016 and about $684,000 going out. $440,000 of that being capital improvements and $245,000 is payment on principal on debt. So there's about $22,000 increase in cash, bringing the cash balance to 4,000, $4,700,000. The target here is 1.3, so cash is very healthy. In your capital improvement, line 36, you got almost $1 million in 2017, followed by a quarter of a million and $200,000 and another $900,000. So there's some pretty healthy construction. Apparently, we didn't have a 2021, which I'm guessing is probably going to be in the $200,000 range also. So all of that being said, we don't need a rate increase in 2016, but in 2017, we're recommending a 3% annual for the rest of the years in this horizon. And part of that is being driven by line 20. Notice that we're getting down to 1.3 and the minimum is 1.25. You don't want it to fall below 1.25 because then you're in technical default on your bond covenant for these revenue bonds. And so that's part of the reason. You can see by 2021, it's back to 1.76 and returning 3.9% on your investment in that utility. So it looks like we can hold off a year there and see how things go until next year. Any questions on sewer?
She says water. Yeah, you've been on water.
That's water.
And this is where cash is coming from, 2 feet of electric.
Okay, so we're going to see $2 million out of this cash fund. And that'll, that'll go as a cash outflow. We'll add a line, and we'll have 2 million coming in out in 16. And so your, all of your cash balances there will be down by 2 million, but you'll still be above the minimum requirement.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
And then last, the sewer. I'm going to cut to the chase and say, look at, you know, we're talking about a million for utility here. Net operating income in 16 is negative. And even with a 6.3% rate increase, it'll be negative in 17. And notice that debt coverage in line 20 is 1.25. So we're just skimming that minimum target, and that's how I set the 6.3 level. Then with a 5.8 annual increase thereafter, debt coverage resumes nicely above 1.25 and ends up with a 2.2. And the return on investment is 4%. And you have about 1,900,000 in the bank in 2021 against a, just south of million dollar target. So with those numbers, we're recommending that you adopt a two-year increase, one for October of 16 of 6.3, and followed by a 5.8 in October of 2017. And in your packet is table C, which is those two rates shown in a summary. There's only two rates, well, there's three rate schedules, but only two that have customers on them because large general service is there in case a very large industrial customer comes to town. And that would have a surcharge if they had lots of resor, suspended solids in their, in their wastewater. Residential rate, you can find on this page that's called table B1. Customer charge goes from 17 to 18 and the affluent charge from 2.9 cents to 3.075. And you can see on the table, if you look at the percentage, it's 5 to 6%. And if you look at the dollar increase per month, it runs between $1 and $2 depending on how much water you use in the wintertime, which is how you determine what the year-round sewer bill will be. Commercial side, you can see is an 8.3% increase, but the dollars are somewhere between $6.50 and $9, depending on if you're using 500, wintertime consumption or 2 to 3,000. And then the same thing you're going to see for the second year proposal. Again, the residential class, $1 to $2. The commercial, right around $6. And then the large general service rate is there. There's a little bit of an increase because we know that some of those costs have gone up since the last time the rate was proposed. So that is my presentation. I believe there is a draft ordinance there for your consideration. And I certainly would happen to, happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions, your comments from the council?
Kelly, you had a recommendation, I think, and I didn't catch the email until I was already running out of the office on this ordinance.
Oh, it was just a text change. Nothing substantive, but just a typo basically on that last page above section 2. Just to leave the word "which" just makes sense, makes sense.
In section 2 of the large general service?
Right above section 2 of the ordinance.
In the very first line that says wastes which are not.
In the, in the paragraph above section 2, it says that if the additional costs associated with large general service waste, which are not recovered.
By the large general service rate charges or above surcharges, the city shall not have the option to review. So you want to take the "which" out of that first?
So it would read if the additional costs associated with large general service wastes are not recovered by the large general service rate charges or above surcharges, the city shall not have the option to review.
Yeah, that seems to make more sense.
Yeah, it's kind of superfluous, words there.
Not only lawyers use the word "superfluous."
I'm just venge here. I learned that word from somebody. I don't know. Fair enough.
Any other questions or comments from the council, specifically about the ordinance? If not, then I would ask if someone can introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Give this back to Bonnie.
In order to amend section 3-227 of the Sioux, of the city code to initiate a 6.3% increase in revenues charged to customers for service from the sewer system of the city effective with the October 2016 billing, and again, increase in revenues by 5.3% in October 2017 to provide for billing thereof, to repeal the original section 3-227 to provide for a time when this ordinance shall be, shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2016-14, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule. The motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes.
I just want to.
Yes, Phil.
Does the pro forma say 5.3 for the second year? I handed my paper back.
6, 3, and 5.
5, 8.
Am I wrong?
It says 5, 8, so if you want.
So these would be 5, 8?
Yeah, look at the second year summary of rates. Yeah, it's 5, 8 there. So I want to make sure that this second blue page, right here. Does that say 5, 8? No, that's 6. That's 6, 3.
Sewer.
That's 6, 3.
That's 0, 1.
Yeah, 5, 8 is the right.
So can they just put it that way?
Kelly, what do you have? So the title I just read says 5.3. Is actually supposed to be 5.8?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a text change to the ordinance. So you can, we're just, you can do a motion to approve it with that text, text change.
Okay. So right now, we're just doing the statutory rule.
That's right.
And then we'll get to that here in a second. So we have a motion and a second. So we motion a second on suspending the statutory rule of three readings. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Walking back, press, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
This is ordinance number 2016-14, as amended to 5.8% instead of 5.3%. For, in October of 2017?
Yeah, so the motion would be to approve the ordinance with those two text changes.
So we would like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read. With a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none. The question is, shall ordinance number 2014 dash, 2016 dash 14 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Walking back, press, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
Because we're going to pull item number 8, this will be the last ordinance for this evening. And we have a cleanup motion here in a second. So for right now, I'll need one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record. The motion in a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Walking back, press, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
Thanks. And so we're, I'm just going to jump down to seven. We need to do this one more time for, that last meeting, we did not make that motion to make it permanent, part of the permanent record. So just to clean up, we could go down to number seven. Consideration that adoption of ordinance number twenty sixteen dash thirteen be preserved and kept in separate ordinance record. And so for that item, if you recall, the last meeting, we needed one final motion to make that ordinance a part of the permanent record as well. Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Fine, if ever, welcome back. Chris Singleton Schmidt hands motion.
Thank you, thank you, Phil. We'll now move back up number five. Item number five, consideration of claim of Foxden Rentals LLC, Charles Liski, five, uh, three five, three three, Bruce Drive Scotts Bluff for personal property damage at four oh seven South Street Sewer. Bruce?
Well, Mr. Liski filed a claim against the city in the amount of fourteen hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety cents for reimbursement of costs to a rental property located at four oh seven South Street. It's related to a sewer backup beginning the weekend of April fourth and continuing through October third of twenty fifteen. Mr. Liski claims the backup was caused by a collapsed clay sewer pipe and additionally blockage in the city main. Mr. Liski claims no damage to the property, but reimbursement for the cost of determining the cause of the backup. I think you know it.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Liski?
I'd move for denial. The city insurance company.
We have a motion for denial. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Did you want to add anything while you sent your here?
No, I just brought the original receipts if anybody needed.
I didn't know if you drove all the way from Scotts Bluff for this. I thought you had an opportunity to talk.
No, I, I happen to be in the area, so I chose to file the claim at this time because it wouldn't take a special trip for me to be here.
Good. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Fine, if ever, welcome back. Chris Singleton Schmidt hands motion.
Thank you.
So the process with the insurance, what, what should I expect?
They'll get ahold of you and get your statement, and then they'll talk to our people, and then they'll make a determination.
Thank you.
Item number six, consideration of authorization to advertise for quotes for water treatment plant reverse osmosis membrane. Bruce?
Tim's here to talk about it too, if you need to have any questions for him, but the filters at the O R, our old plant have never been replaced. Normally, the last five to seven years, we use anti-scaling chemicals in our system to keep the scale from building up and plugging up the filters, so we've gotten over ten years, right at ten? Twelve years? So we estimate the cost to be around a hundred and thirty-five. We got a grant from the upper, upper Big Blue NRD for thirty-seven five to help with these costs. So we'd like to go out for bids on it so we can get those replaced. If you got questions, Tim's here to answer anything like that.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Your motion?
We will, if there's no discussion, once.
I can tell you the new filter should, they'll do better than the old ones. They're new and improved. Right now, we're pumping harder to get the water through the filter, so we're going to save some energy costs and different things like that, so.
Move for approval. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Fine, if ever, welcome back. Chris Singleton Schmidt hands motion.
We did seven, and we're pulling eight. We're going to actually send that, we had a request to have, from the committee, to have them look at the, the comprehensive pay plan before we bring it to council. So we're going to try and hopefully get a meeting scheduled pretty quick on that. Chris, you thinking?
Yeah, I was waiting here back from Carl. Did you guys hear when he's back?
I don't, I'm not sure.
So I emailed him to see when he's back. Hopefully, maybe next week.
So the rest of the council will be seeing it soon, but we, we're going to go through the committee first, so. That's why we're pulling number eight. Number nine, city manager's report?
Report's in your packet. I talked to you about the G I S workshop and the savings to the city by going to that instead of B I. Again, Paul, or Bonnie and I met with Paul, so you got his report on the huge savings for us. And we've been really busy, but you know, Bonnie and I have been mostly working on the, on the budget as well as still filling records, open records requests. We're up to nineteen now. So anyway, everybody's been really busy. You know, the seasons are closing up on, on the different things. The girls softball started, and the pool's last day is Sunday, so the doggy dip is Sunday late afternoon. And we've had a really good season at the pool. We've been real busy, and we haven't had any issues with the operations of it. It's gone really well. Had a good season.
Any questions? Yes, Kelly.
Is there an update on Star Street?
I can give an update, yeah. I have prepared a proposed settlement agreement and an updated easement, and I've divided that to council for municipal district.
Any other questions? Otherwise, is there anything, a motion to accept the report? So you have a motion, second.
We will motion that.
Give Dean a second. Give Dean the opportunity. Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Fine, if ever, welcome back. Chris Singleton Schmidt hands motion.
Item number ten, future requests for council agenda items or administrative action. Saying none. Item eleven, the motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Fine, if ever, welcome back. Chris Singleton Schmidt hands motion.
Thank you. Thanks.